Evening and want to welcome you to Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, December 6, 2022. We're going to start our meeting with the invocation and pledge, so if you would please, please rise and Mr. Strickland is going to do that.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, as we enter into this holiday season, we'd ask thy blessings upon this community and all that live and work here. Would ask that you would look over our first responders, both here and abroad. As we go through our meeting tonight, please guide, lead, guide and direct us in all of the decisions that we make. In all your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is to review the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position, excuse me, position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Are there any Planning Commission announcements? All right, the next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from November 1, 2022, subject to any necessary corrections.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes for November 1, 2022.
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda is to review the proposed 2022 meeting date calendar. Maurice, do we have that? It says 2023, thank you.
Apparently it's not, and also I've been asked if you could please move closer to your microphones.
Okay, we don't, we don't have that.
No, apparently it's not on.
The 2023 calendar, okay. So our meetings are scheduled for January 10, 2023, February 7, 2023, March 7, 2023, April 4, 2023, May 2, June 6, July 11, August 1, September 12, October 3, November 7, and December 5. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the calendar as presented. Second.
All in favor? So that is our calendar for 2023. All right, the first item on our agenda, under public comment, site plan approval is SP 5248, 225 Flash Foods Road, and Mr. Postal will be presenting this for the county.
Good afternoon, good evening. It stated, this is a site plan approval request for a new 143 hotel room at 225 Flash Food Roads. That's the private access easement that the Crystal used to be at at Exit 29. The hotel will be a dual branded Fairfield by Marriott and Town Place Suites by Marriott. And this is the zoning map showing the parcel right here. This is the southeast corner of Exit 29. The entire area near Highway 17 is in freeway commercial zoning. And this is the site plan showing the proposed hotel, and it is at the end of the access easement. And this is the elevation, conceptual elevations for the hotel. There's the Fairfield on one side and the Town Place Suites on the other side. And we are recommending approval of the application, and I believe the property owners are here tonight.
Okay, would you come forward, please? And state your name.
Chris Patel with HOS Management.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Patel? Okay, thank you. Well, did you want to ask us to approve this?
Yes. That'd be great.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is, this is a public comment period, so I'm asking if there is anyone in the chamber who would like to speak against this proposal. If so, please come to the podium and state your name. Two people moving around, but they weren't coming, they weren't coming up here. Okay, is there anyone here who wants to speak on behalf of this? Please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 5248 as presented. Second.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, Commissioners? All in favor? No opposition, so it, so it passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is SP 5270, Marshes of Glen Baptist Church, and Mr. Chris is here to present for the county.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you, we have consideration for a 4,600 square foot building. The existing use is a church, and it's on a corner of Emmanuel Church Road and Highway 82. Also, there will be an addition of six parking spaces provided at the site. Here is the site. And here is the site plan. In purple, you will see where the additional parking spaces are, and in green is the addition. And here are your possible actions. Staff does recommend approval as presented, and Gary Neville is here as an agent, as well as the property owner.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions of Christopher? All right, Mr. Neville, would you like to come forward and tell us about this project?
Commissioners, Gary Neville, SHOOP Surveying, Agent for Marshes of Glen Baptist Church, and thank you for your service, big agenda, and would like to request that you approve as submitted, the site plan.
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda is to review the proposed 2022 meeting date calendar. Maurice, do we have that? It says 2023. Thank you, Neil.
Apparently it's not a... And also, I've been asked if you could please move closer to your microphones.
Okay. We don't, we don't have that.
No, apparently it's not on.
The 2023 calendar, okay. So our meetings are scheduled for January 10th, 2023, February 7th, 2023, March 7th, 2023, April 4th, 2023, May 2nd, June 6th, July 11th, August 1st, September 12th, October 3rd, November 7th, and December 5th. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the calendar as presented. Second.
All in favor? So that is our calendar for 2023. All right, the first item on our agenda under public comment, site plan approval, is SP 5248, 225 Flash Foods Road. And Mr. Postal will be presenting this for the county.
Good afternoon, good evening. It stated, this is a site plan approval request for a new 143 hotel room at 225 Flash Food Roads. That's the private access easement that the Crystal used to be at at Exit 29. The hotel will be a dual branded Fairfield by Marriott and Town Place Suites by Marriott. And this is the zoning map showing the parcel right here. This is the southeast corner of Exit 29. The entire area near Highway 17 is in freeway commercial zoning. And this is the site plan showing the proposed hotel, and it is at the end of the access easement. And this is the elevation, conceptual elevations for the hotel. There's the Fairfield on one side and the Town Place Suites on the other side. We are recommending approval of the application, and I believe the property owners are here tonight.
Okay, would you come forward, please? And state your name.
Chris Patel with HOS Management.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Patel? Okay, thank you. Well, did you want to ask us to approve this?
Yes. That'd be great.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is, this is a public comment period. So I'm asking if there is anyone in the chamber who would like to speak against this proposal? If so, please come to the podium and state your name. Two people moving around, but they weren't coming, they weren't coming up here. Okay, is there anyone here who wants to speak on behalf of this? Please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 5248 as presented.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, commissioners? All in favor? No opposition, so it, so it passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is SP 5270 Marshes of Glen Baptist Church. And Mr. Chris is here to present for the county.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you, we have consideration for a 4,600 square foot building. The existing use is a church, and it's on a corner of Emmanuel Church Road and Highway 82. Also, there will be an addition of six parking spaces provided at the site. Here is the site. And here is the site plan. In purple, you will see where the additional parking spaces are, and in green is the addition. And here are your possible actions. Staff does recommend approval as presented, and Gary Neville is here as an agent, as well as the property owner.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions of Christopher? All right, Mr. Neville, would you like to come forward and tell us about this project?
Commissioners, Gary Neville, Shoup Surveying, agent for Marshes of Glen Baptist Church. And thank you for your service, big agenda, and would like to request that you approve as submitted the site plan.
Any questions of Mr. Neville?
Pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Okay, again, this is a public comment period. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition to SP 5270? If so, please come to the podium and state your name. Nobody moving around this time. All right, is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 5270 as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners?
We're going to get through this.
So it passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is SP 5278, 485 Canal Road. And Mr. Postal is here to speak on behalf of the county.
Good evening again. This is a site plan approval request for a new 4,000 square foot immediate medical care facility at 485 Canal Road. There is an expedited subdivision application that's been submitted and basically approved to adjust the property lines to align with what you might see on GIS, which are different than on the site plan a little bit. This is the zoning map showing this entire area is in the canal crossing to PD. And this is the site right here. This is the south coast bank that you approved a few months ago. This is the site plan showing the 4,000 square foot building. And this is the conceptual elevations for what the care facility will look like. And we are recommending approval of the application. Wesley Franks from Robert Civil Engineering is here on behalf of Brian Hunt to speak on the application.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Postal? Okay, would, who did you? Wesley Franks, would you come forward, Wesley?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Commissioners. Wesley Franks here, here to request approval of the site plan as presented. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Franks? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, our public comment period. And so is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Please come forward and, to the podium and state your name. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 5278 as approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners? All in favor? It's unanimous approval. Thank you. Next on our agenda is SP 5279, 3855 Darian Highway. And Mr. Postal is here to speak on behalf of the county.
This is a site plan approval request for a new 40,250 square foot combined office and retail building at 3855 Darian Highway. This site is in the Westminster Apartments PD, but it's in a section of the PD that allows for highway commercial uses. This is the zoning map showing the site here. This is Shoup Surveying's office right here, and this is what Westminster Apartments are to the west and across the street's medium residential zoning. This is the site plan showing the 40,000 square foot building with the multiple units. And this is the conceptual elevations for what it may look like. We are recommending approval, and Jake Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering is here to speak on this tonight.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Postal, Commissioners? Mr. Hightower, would you like to come forward and talk about this?
Good evening, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for your time tonight. This is a project that's within District 4, Mr. Strickland's district, and we would ask that you approve this as presented and available for any questions as well.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Hightower? Okay.
Thank you.
Again, this is open for public comment. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Leanne Conway. This is my first meeting with this. I am a resident near the proposed, the proposed site and do have some concerns with regards to the, the traffic, not the traffic in, but rather the traffic out with a 24-unit. Unfortunately, I didn't have enough time to, and I'm not even sure if it's available, that the site plan could have been, I could have seen it earlier. I do also have concerns with regards to the, there are no sidewalks. So my, my initial concern was that there could be, that there could be foot traffic from the apartment complex to this facility. It is a very dangerous footpath area. There are people that do walk 17, and it's, as a citizen, that is quite possibly my biggest concern. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Please come forward and state your name. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Mr. Hightower, would you like to come back and answer the questions that this lady addressed? And I'm sorry, I didn't remember your name?
Leanne Conway.
Leanne Conway, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address Ms. Conway's comments. So the first comment was regarding traffic as they're exiting the facility. This is a G-dot right-of-way, and so what we did is we made sure that we abide by the G-dot specifications for ingress and egress, as well as spacing between the existing road and then also the entrance by Shoup's office. It is a large intersection where even a traffic study, the type of business, it's not a high volume of a kind of a business there. The purpose of what they're doing, if you remember, we did a site over on Norwood Street, very similar to this. It's going to be a minimal retail square footage in the front with kind of a warehouse space in the back. Kind of picture a landscaper or someone who has the need to store some materials in their office. That's kind of what this will be, so it's not going to be something like a supermarket or something where there'll be a lot of people in and out. It's really more conducive for car traffic than foot traffic. So the good point was brought up about sidewalks. The way we handle sidewalks is that it is G-dot right-of-way, so if they already had sidewalks that were existing, then by all means, we would have tied into them. But given that there are no sidewalks and there's also no pedestrian walkways to cross the street, then for us to put in sidewalks, they wouldn't really go anywhere. So it would be a good use if there were sidewalks already there. But at this time, that's, that's why they were left off, is because we abide by what G-dot requires and what's already there. I think that addresses the two main points. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve SP 5279 as presented.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, how do you vote? Did you vote, Mr. Strickland?
I did.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see you. So we're, so we're unanimous. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is SP 5282 Hyundai of Brunswick. Ms. Leaf is here for the county.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Community Development. This is SP 5282 Hyundai of Brunswick. And this is, let's see, so this is located on Altama Avenue. There is an existing dealership on a parcel next to this. This is a vacant parcel. And it's zone highway commercial, so a car dealership is allowed. And they are proposing approximately 19,000 square foot new Hyundai dealership and associated infrastructure. So here's some elevations of what the proposed dealership would look like. So this would be the front. And then they have a north elevation on the bottom of the screen. And then there's east, south elevations. And this is the west elevation that shows the service entrance on the right-hand side. And this is the site plan. This is Altama Avenue on the left-hand side of the screen. This is the existing dealership. And so they are proposing, there is an access that currently exists right here that goes into the existing dealership. They are proposing a new access. This new access to the parcel, this is a, so this does meet code. Our engineers during their review process did have some concerns about creating another access here. They prefer that there would be a shared access here and then potentially down the road, another access up here that could be shared. But this does meet code. They are allowed to have the access here. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Here's the new building. And here's just the zoomed-in version. Again, here's the proposed access existing on the bottom. And they do meet the buffer requirement. There's a Type E along Altama Avenue. And these are proposed actions. And Wesley Franks with Robert Civil is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Leaf? Mr. Franks, would you like to come to, to the podium?
Commissioners, Wesley Franks again with Robert Civil Engineering. I'd be glad to answer any question you might have, and here to request approval of the site plan as presented.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Franks? Thank you. Okay, this is a public comment period. So I'm asking if there is anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition to this, this site plan? Please come forward and state your name. Wow, this is so good. Is there any, I just, good that we're not opposing a lot tonight. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor of this project? Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 5282 as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, what, are you voting in favor? No opposition. So it has passed. Okay, the next item on our agenda is SP 5283, 590 Chapel Crossing Road. And Mr. Postal is here for the county.
Good evening again. This is a site plan approval request for a new 171-unit multifamily residential development at 590 Chapel Crossing Road. This project has previously received preliminary plat approval earlier this year as a fee simple duplex and townhome community, but the applicant decided not to pursue final plat approval. The preliminary plat is valid for five years from the day it was signed, so should the applicant wish to pursue final plat approval within this five-year period, he would be able to do so. And this site is next, right next door to the Point Grand Apartments, a 264-unit apartment complex which you approved a little while ago, and that's directly to the west of this site. And this is the zoning map showing the current site. Sea-shaped parcel, this is in the town square planned development. This is Altama Elementary, which actually is in a commercial planned development. And of course, Fletzy is across the street, and there is a subdivision, R-6 zoning directly across the street of Chapel Crossing. And this is the site plan showing the townhome units to the north of the site and the duplex units, most of the southern portion of the site. These are the conceptual elevations, either the duplex units up top, and these are going to be what the townhomes are going to look like. We are recommending approval, and Wesley Franks is here to speak on this project.
Any questions of Mr. Postal, Commissioners? Mr. Franks, would you like to come forward again? Maybe you should just hang out over there.
Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. Just a little bit of background about this project, like Maurice has stated. We had preliminary plat approval, I believe it was last year, on this project. And the way the developer's going right now is just due to market conditions. He wants to, instead of having these fee simple lots, he's turning it to a site plan. He's intending to develop it himself at this point and have a rental product. Now, he, he is intending in the future to come back and potentially subdivide this and move forward with the plat process, but currently, right now, with the way the market is, he intends to just kind of develop it himself and have a more of a rental product. And we, we currently have full construction plan approval for what you see here for infrastructure, and they've actually already started that process. So we, that's kind of where we're at right now. We've changed it from the plat to the site plan that's presented before you right now. So I'm here to request approval as presented.
I have a question. So this is going to be rental, but you say he's going to come back later and, and plant individual lots? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Where, where these properties are, are built?
Yeah, I don't know if, if you had the, we had a copy of the plat. I don't know if it's, if it's in your packet, so. So basically, we removed the lot lines, and it's one parcel now. And at some point in the future, he may or may not come back and subdivide that.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, do you have questions? Thank you. This is a public comment period. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition to this project? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, I'm Susan Lee, and I live directly across from this at 651 Chapel Crossing Road. I don't understand the, I want to know where the entrance is going to be. But let me start by saying, if you've been down Chapel Crossing Road, you've been on a drag strip. Literally, it is very dangerous. Many times, they're not going 35 miles an hour. That is exactly what the speed limit says. But it's, if, if the policeman would like to get new cars and get new stuff for themselves, they can hide somewhere. I guess all the trees are gone now. But somewhere, they can hide and get everything for this county y'all need. It is a drag strip. Many times when I'm trying to turn into my driveway, I have to pass it because they're coming up so fast behind me that I'm scared I'm going to be rear-ended. We have had several cars down in the other neighbors' yards. So traffic is ridiculous. And those 265 apartments, they hadn't moved in there yet. They're just beginning to lease them. So we're adding 265 more families, more cars, more children walking on that sidewalk to get to Altama Elementary. Accidents waiting to happen. It's awful. I need to know where the entrance would be. Can someone point to the entrance, please, and find my house up there, too? Okay, now wait a minute. Do that again, because I couldn't see your mouse. Where?
At the top.
At the top. Okay, that's what they're using now? Is that what they're using now to get the dump trucks in and out and in and out? You assume so? I'd like a yes or no, not an assume. Okay, so that is the entrance they're using now. Can you find 651 Chapel Crossing on there? Is my house on there or not? I can't see it. I'm sorry. What is this? Okay, so it, show me Chapel Crossing. Is that Chapel Crossing? Oh, up there, I'm saying, I'm totally. But. Okay, my next-door neighbors live right beside the Fletzy fence. Okay, so I'm over just a little bit there?
To the right, yeah.
Oh, to the right. Okay. It's, will the other entrance use this, will the other parcel, excuse me, parcel, will they use the same entrance? It's a shared, so the one they're using now where they put the curbs in, that's going to be a shared access? Because we certainly don't need another one on there, I don't think. Can you explain the five years? They have a, a time period to do what?
Earlier this year in February, they got preliminary plat approval to split up each one of these units into a separate fee simple lot. If the property owner wanted to come back within that five-year period, he could try to get final plat approval from the Board of Commissioners, and each one of these 171 units could be split into a separate fee simple lot.
Okay, that's great to me. But I, and I know y'all are going to think this is funny, but I've been trying to get my house painted for two years. Needless to say, the dirt that has poured into, I've got that thick dirt in my windows. I took pictures of that and my cars and sent them to, to the Georgia Glen, no, the Glen Environmental Coalition, trying to say, what can you do? I finally got a water truck out there. It's been really hard not to know these people and not seeing these people, but having to deal with these people. It's, it's just been a hardship on all of us. And there are only a few houses there. We're not a, a big, huge neighborhood or anything. And I've lived there for 39 years. And so it's, it, it's very concerning. It really is. I would think that my neighbors would be here, but the sign only went up for one day, and then it disappeared. We don't know, I was going to Walmart, and I saw it, and I went, I'll stop coming back right down. You know, where, where it's going to be, what time, blah, blah, blah. It was gone. I don't know why. It was just gone. So I'm just saying, please, please, this, this, this traffic is horrible. It's just awful. And I'm just afraid it's, it's, well, I know it's going to get worse, much worse. And you just talked about, okay, Tom, all right. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alice Miller-Kyse, and I'm the Vice President of Coastal Conservation with the organization 100 Miles, based here in Brunswick. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today regarding SP 5283. I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of different projects on the docket. So in preparation of that, I went back and. So, in preparation of that, I went back and really just started looking at the charge of this commission to remind myself of what the expectations might be. And in the enabling county code, it states in chapter, chapter 2-19-3, that it declares that this commission was created due to the present and projected growth in Glen County. We are experiencing a lot of growth right now, and what I thought would be really helpful is, again, to go back and determine what role this commission plays. And it's affirming to read that it is determined and declared that this commission, along with the Island Planning Commission, is necessary and essential to ensure the welfare and convenience of citizens of Glen County and of the state of Georgia, and to ensure the proper economic development for Glen County.
Ma'am, I don't mean to stop you, but did you want to address this project?
Yes, ma'am. I'm getting there. I wanted to bring that up. I had debated whether I had time or not, but considering Ms. Lee's concerns, I wanted to make sure that we all kind of had that in our heads, because looking at the specific site plan for the town square planned development, it's your responsibility to really think about the region as a whole and Glen County as a whole, not just the specifics of this particular site. But when I looked at the site plan, I wanted to bring up several issues that were really concerning to me. The first is that research shows that open space, green areas and trees enhance the value of residential properties and captures precipitation and helps reduce stormwater management costs. But the PD text for this property and the site plan that you're reviewing right now demonstrate that there's no consideration at all for such assets. And specifically, in section M of the planned development text, again, I'm reviewing what's available online. I don't know about the Latin that was discussed about what's going to happen next with the approval that occurred earlier this year. But if you read the PD text, in the section that is titled "Statement Regarding Landscaping and Tree Preservation," it states that "All disturbed portions of any site, lot or out parcel will be landscaped with sod plantings and landscape irrigation comparable to the surrounding mall development." It goes on to say that the site is almost entirely small-growth pine, was, and care will be taken to preserve any desirable tree that may be found. And then it says, quotes, "Trees will be added to meet the requirement of the mall development district and to enhance the overall environment." Glen Place Mall is not a residential property.
Your time is up.
I thought it was five minutes?
Is it five or three? It is five.
Thank you.
Site plans is three.
Okay. Okay, well, again, this property really is concerning, because it's obvious that no consideration was taken for the quality of the existence of the residents here. The stormwater management plan that was developed, was developed 17 years ago, based on a map...
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is within your authority to say that this is not an appropriate site design, and we encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is ZM 5287. Oh, I'm sorry, I got confused. Thank you.
You have to vote on this, ma'am.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Okay.
There was a public comment period closed?
Yes, the public...
Not in favor.
Yeah. We've just done in opposition. Need to ask if anybody wants to speak in favor.
I am so confused. Yes, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this?
Don't feel bad, I am, too.
Please come forward and state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
I wanted to see if Mr. Franks would come up, because I do, I feel for Ms. Lee, because one day I did drive by, and I wondered where I was, because I could not see for the dust. And I think we've just had one of those years that the rain comes in spurts, right? And that's a very large site for our community. It's been a large site with what was done adjacent. And I don't know if, and I did see a water truck out there one other time I went by, if there's more that the developer could do to, you know, control the, it's such a large site, the wind just gets going, and there's tons of dirt flying everywhere out into the roadway and has to be all over y'all's cars and houses.
Yeah, and again, like I said, we've got the land disturbance permit for that, and I can definitely bring that up. One of the BNP's on that is dust control, so obviously, we try to control that as much as we can, so I can definitely bring that up with the developer, make sure we try to control that with water trucks more frequently. And if we've got, you know, periods where we never want to get high winds coming, maybe have that out there more often than not.
Right.
And then to point back to the access to the site, like Maurice had stated, the site plan that was approved, the apartments, last year, I believe, included the access as part of that development, and you can see it up here to the north. And we are adding a dedicated left and a right-turn lane on Chapel Crossing. I believe, Ms. Lee, that's correct. Her house is a little further to the east. I don't have a good map, but we did look at that, and I think it's a little bit further to the east of the access that this development is going to be utilizing. And we are having an access on Scranton Connector as well, so to the south, so there are two access points for this development. As far as the speeding, I can't really do anything about that, but hopefully adding those left and right-turn lanes would help with that. So, hopefully that answered the questions you had.
So, you're coming from the, coming from the east on Chapel Crossing, there's going to be a left-turn lane in the center?
That's right. Yeah, we're pushing the dedicated through lane out to the right, so there's going to be a little bit of road widening there.
Okay, and then the opposite coming the other way.
Correct.
So, Mr. Franks, this curb cut was part of the original site plan approval?
It was, yes, sir, associated with the apartments. So, it'll be a shared access.
So, her question, Ms. Lee's question, that this was going to be the entrance, is the answer to that is yes?
That's correct, yes. That will be the entrance. Like I said, there is a secondary on Scranton Connector for both the apartments and this residential development.
Okay, I would like to just clarify, because I'm talking about coming back and plating it. For people that didn't understand what that means, that means that it could go, that means that it could go from being a rental unit to someone can buy that property.
Yep.
Each individual lot.
Correct.
They can buy that property if they choose to change that in the next five years.
Yeah, essentially, what you see here, basically, we've just removed the lot lines for each individual townhome and duplex unit, and it's just one piece of property now. And if the intent for the developer to come back in the future to plat that, then those lot lines would then be added back and making sure those do meet standards for the minimum lot size.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 5283 as presented.
Second?
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Madam Chair, I'd like to abstain from this vote.
This, the one we just voted on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm going to be a little bit...
So, you're not going to vote, is what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, we have, we have, we have six in favor. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
All right, now, to where I started before. We have before us ZM 5287, 500 Harriedriggers Boulevard, Planned Development District Amendment.
Okay, Maurice Postal planning and zoning again. This is a request to amend the Golden Isles Pause PD to allow churches a permitted use, and this would just be at 500 Harriedriggers Boulevard. The site is located in tract R3, and that's one of the residential districts within the PD, and a church or other type of worship is not listed as a permitted use in a residential district of the Golden Isles Gateway PD. There are five permitted uses, and you can see them here: single-family homes, multifamily, model homes, golf courses, and senior assisted care living. Within the Golden Isles Gateway Pause PD, churches would be permitted in one of the commercial districts, where you have highway commercial or freeway commercial uses. The PD was enacted in 1999. Bible Baptist Church did properly apply for and receive a commercial building permit in 2005, six years after the PD was enacted. There was no mention in the review comments of a church not being a permitted use in the Golden Isles Gateway Pause PD. And I also looked at the file for Golden Isles Baptist Church down the road at 255 Harriedriggers, and they had the same situation. They properly applied for and received a commercial building permit, and there was also no mention in the review history that churches were not a permitted use in the residential section of the PD. And this is the zoning map, showing the site right here. The entire area is within the Golden Isles Gateway. PD, you have a question already, Commissioner Bowright?
I do. You're kidding, correct?
I am, I am not kidding. That's why we're here tonight.
Well, there was actually a third church, too.
Yes, the Church of the...
It's no longer as operational, but there was a third church.
Yes, I looked at the file for Church of Nazarene. They hadn't applied for any building permits since we had started our electric file system. All right, yes. Yes.
Well...
Sure, absolutely.
Let me get my composure just a moment. This was basically just an oversight for the county? Is that what that was?
It's an oversight for whoever wrote the PD text.
So, Mr. Postal, are we to assume that Golden Isles, is it Golden Isles Baptist Church that's also on Harriedriggers Boulevard, they're going to be coming to us for the same thing?
I don't know that they will be, but the reason why we're here tonight is because Bible Baptist is planning and getting site plan approval in the future, and of course, applying for a commercial building permit.
All right.
So, that would then encompass the Golden Isles Baptist Church?
No, this rezoning action is only for this parcel.
Okay, Mr. Postal, one more question, sir.
Absolutely.
What's going to happen if we say no?
Then technically, they couldn't get site plan approval or a commercial building permit.
What happens to the existing building?
Would it be grandfathered in?
Like I said, the county did review and give them a building permit and a CO, so... I guess that's a question you could ask the county attorney.
Yes, sir. I just, I don't understand how things like this happen. But we want to make it right.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We have to correct the situation at this point and move forward. Let's don't look backwards anymore. I just found the opportunity, I guess, to pile on, and we need to move forward instead of backwards.
I don't even know what I was doing back in 1999, Commissioner Bowright, so...
Thank you, sir.
Probably still in high school.
And this is the extent of the PD text revision. The applicant is adding church, of course, as a permitted use within the residential district of the Pause PD, and adding that church buildings can go up to 35 feet. That's necessary, because only residential structures' heights are listed in the PD text. And now, these are your possible actions tonight, and Chris Amos is here to represent the property owner.
I have a question. So, would it not be the right thing to do for the county staff to reach out to the other churches that currently sit built and not in compliance, and begin the process on their behalf with their consent to do this for them as well?
Yes.
This obviously puts them in a bad position, and it's the, you know, the county's oversight.
Sure, no, I can definitely contact Golden Isles Baptist.
Absolutely. You brought up a great point.
So, they don't get blindsided if they're not...
It gets right back to our non-compliant properties in Glen County from our rewrite. An insurance company, if something happened to one of those churches, an insurance company could say, we're not paying for it, because it wasn't supposed to be built there to start with.
Right.
Yeah.
No, that's correct. So, I can definitely reach out to Golden Isles Baptist.
Okay, because I'm sure they're not sitting at home watching Facebook to be entertained by this meeting, so they may be unaware.
Any other questions of Mr. Postal? Mr. Amos, would you like to come forward? We'll try not to be as hard on you as we were on Mr. Postal.
Well, I hope so, because none of this was my fault. Chris Amos would see SEC. I want to clarify a couple of things. So, the building, the roof of the building is higher than 35 feet. The 35 feet is occupied space, so there's no occupied space with people in it at that eleva, at that height. And there's a steeple on top of this thing, too, which is higher than that, which we are in process right now of filing. We've already filed with FAA to clarify that the steeple won't be a problem, but given, I've already looked at it, it's not going to be an issue. I just don't have final approval back. We will be coming back with a site plan. I don't remember exactly what, what is the height of the roof? Do you remember? Yeah, so, the roof itself, this, this, this project is a new sanctuary for the church, so it's all open on the inside. The height of the roof itself is about 60 feet to the top. The height of the building now is above 35 feet. The roof itself, not occupied space. So, how, what kind of clarification do we need in the zoning text to be able to deal with the roof height?
Yeah, we could request to put it in now.
That's what I'd like to do. I just want to make sure that... Mr. Amos?
Yes, and it clearly says occupied space, but occupied space is where there are people, not where there's air underneath the roof. But we would like to go ahead and get that to the height that it needs to be, if that's an issue.
Isn't there a height requirement in the code for 45-foot buildings in Glen County?
I know that we've done them up to 60.
Yeah, freeway commercial and forest agricultural.
Yeah, but this ain't freeway commercials.
Right.
This is a church that they're trying to wedge into a residential area.
Forest agricultural also allows up to 60.
Yeah, and it ain't forest agricultural. So, it's, it's, it's 45 feet is as high as you can go with a building in Glen County and be in accordance with the zoning.
Is that accurate? Is that correct, Maurice?
I mean, typically, when we dealt with building height issues, it's the height of the ladder truck, so that the fire department can extract people from a burning building. In this case, this is all just the, this is just the roof of the sanctuary that's up that high. There is no occupied space or office space at that level.
But you understand what I'm saying?
So, that's why, and I think I put a clarification there, and I can't really read this from here, non-occupied spaces such as sanctuary ceilings, steeples, and other da-da-da will be allowed subject to FAA approval, which we have filed for that on the steeple itself.
But you understand what we're doing if you approve this with 60-foot? You're setting a precedent, then, that zoning doesn't mean anything. You can build to whatever height you want.
Well, I certainly, I mean, this is limited to this parcel and to this project.
I know that, Mr. Amos. I'm just talking about, other people are going to come, and they're going to want to build 175 feet, because they can say, well, you approved a church for 60.
Yes. Are there any other churches in that area that have steeples that high?
I do not know the answer to that question.
The 60-foot is not...
The steeple itself is not an issue, I don't think, because I think that's excluded from the height limitations already as a, as one of the exceptions to the height limits, if I'm...
I bring that up for a reason.
Right.
Some years back, it's been a long time, I lose track of time, at the corner of Harriedriggers Boulevard and Highway 17.
Okay.
I was involved when that church was built.
Right.
The FFA at that time, if I'm not mistaken, would not let them put, and I don't recall, like I said, that's 20 years ago, they would not let them put a steeple up. I personally said, that's the stupidest thing I ever heard, because there's 75-foot pine trees next to us.
Right.
I just didn't understand it.
Well, the FAA has some very well-defined criteria about the zone that they're looking at, which deals with the approach on either end of the runway. When you're outside of that approach zone, you don't, that is, that height is not an issue outside the approach zone. The only way to find out is to file with the FAA, which we actually did before we submitted the zoning application.
Yes, sir.
I'm still waiting on the FAA to come back, would, come back with any comments on the steeple height.
Mr. Postal, could Mr. Amos come back, I assume with a special use permit for the steeple on the church? If, you know, so people can't say, well, y'all let them do it.
Yeah, but I don't think it's just the steeple. This is not the steeple. This is the building.
No, it's the roof of the building as well.
It's the roof of the building at 60 feet. The steeple's on top of that. The steeple's on top of that. Are they set at 60 feet? That's it? I mean, the church isn't...
Well, given the design and the geometry of the, of the building, much, something much less than that, I don't believe would work. I think the way the building, the building plans are being designed, they need that height for the building to properly function.
Are they planning to tear down the building they have now?
No.
Okay. So, where is this going?
In front of, between the building and Harriedriggers Boulevard, between the existing building and Harriedriggers Boulevard.
What's, what's the height of the existing building?
I don't know the answer to that question. It's approximately 45 feet tall now.
So, this, this new building that you're proposing, what would be the purpose of the function of it? Would it be a sanctuary?
Yes, that's correct. It's an addition to the existing building, and it will be the sanctuary for the church once it's completed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I think we need to get this ceiling height or the occupied space height addressed with the county before we move further.
Is this a county attorney review, or is this a staff review?
Well, I was going to defer to the county attorney on that. Sorry to put you on the spot there, Aaron.
It's fine. So, I just want to make sure I understand exactly what you're trying to get to on this. You're trying to raise it from 35 to 60, or is there an additional line you want to put into the PD text?
Well, I'd like, I guess I'd like to change the, I'd like to change the wording. I thought that in coordinating this with staff, I thought we had this properly worded for the PD amendment, but if we need to, if we need to revise that paragraph, then I'd like to do that right now if we can.
But is it simply just raising that 35 to 60 is the request to this commission?
Yes, I think that would... But it's not, no, actually, I can't raise it to 60 because that says occupied spaces. And the way that, in every ordinance that I've ever dealt with, occupied spaces are where there were people congregating. So, you had people on floors that had to be extracted from the building by the fire department. So, the, the unoccupied space, the inside of the sanctuary ceiling and roof itself doesn't have any people in it, they're all down at the ground level.
So, we need, you're asking for an additional line on top of that?
I think an additional line on top of that.
So, commissioners, you can add that line this evening. This will go through the Board of Commissioners for further review, further public comment. What I can't tell you is whatnot, you should approve that tonight without having it before you and having it vetted through staff and figuring out what the implications are. But you could, you could add that tonight, and you could go through the process and public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. But whatnot, you want to, or you want to accommodate that, is up to the board or the commission.
What I see is, I mean, we have a lot of houses that could claim that, you know, the, the tall ceilings are not occupied space. The whole house is occupied space, but when, when we start talking about, about adding height, then we have the 35 and 45-feet heights for residential dwellings. And I don't know, this, this bothers me. This 60-feet bothers me. I think there's too many unanswered questions.
So, how do we answer those questions?
Well, how about, Mr. Amos, how about if we deferred this till the next meeting next year, and you go back to the church membership and tell them that this 60-feet probably not going to work, and they need to come up with a...
Well, I think what I'd like to try to find a way through is to find a way to get it approved as the building is already conceived, and I don't know what the path to do that is, but that would be, that would be what we would prefer, is that we find a way to get this project approved with the building height that has already been set.
Well, Mr. Amos, I'll tell you, I won't, I won't vote to approve 60 feet. I mean, maybe my fellow commissioners will, but there's no way that I will approve 60 feet.
Mr. Amos, when you went to the county and you told them that your building height was going to be 60 feet, I'm sure, I mean, it's in the plans.
Right. Well, I haven't submitted, well, actually, at the time that this was submitted, a site plan had not been submitted. It has been since.
And nobody questioned the height?
Well, that's what we're here for, to try to get this resolved.
Well, I guess nobody questioned the church being a residential area, so nobody questioned the height, right?
Well, no, we, we, it was an existing church there. When the project started, they already, they've already got a roof that's 45, the top of the roof is 45 feet tall. So, this was just an addition to an existing building, and they did not know that they needed to get rezoned.
And a single-story building, commercial or residential, can be 45 feet.
Right.
But there's, we talk about 15 feet higher than that.
So, is there a way to get a, one particular project through the review and approval process at site plan approval, or some other, I mean, somebody mentioned a special use permit. I don't know whether that's the right vehicle or not to do this.
Mr. Postal, do you know what the highest height allowed is in the whole PD text for any of the property?
Freeway commercial uses are allowed in certain sections, so you can go up to 60 feet in freeway commercial.
Does the PD text say that? They're allowing 60 feet?
Well, it says it allows developments per...
At the, that code section? Okay. Yeah. And I don't know, I mean, I may be, you know this business better than I do, maybe the county attorney, about whether, you know, to me, the height restriction is so much more than just the fire department, but is, is it only the height, the only concern with that being able to extract people, or is it also to fight the fire of a 60- or 70-foot-high building? You usually got to fight them from above, right?
Right. I mean, there's probably other considerations, you know, with the height as well. I mean, I think that might be one of them. I think, you know, sometimes aesthetics is. Sometimes, you know, the FAA restrictions are a consideration. You know, I know on St. Simons, there's reasons to restrict the heights, but I, without knowing, going back in history, knowing that, I couldn't tell you why it's set at that versus another height.
Mr. Attorney, what can we do tonight?
You have really three, three options. You can approve as presented, you can defer and let staff and, you know, the planning commission, you know, review that further, or you can, you can recommend, I think, denial of it, but that, that's, those are your options. And right now, though, I don't think that's squarely before you right now as far as the 60 feet. That's not part of the...
We would certainly prefer not to deny. We would like to find a way to, to get this thing through the process without a denial this evening.
Could, if, if we voted to approve it contingent upon the fire department weighing in on the heights, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to do that, but we haven't heard the public yet.
I don't think the fire department needs to, you know, this is what planning, this is not a fire department.
Well, that would be part of my concern, is, is the fire department equipped in that part of the county to fight a fire that may be in a building that has a 60-foot ceiling and a 75- or 80-foot steeple? That is a concern of, 110, sorry. You know, that is a concern of mine, for sure. And I think that aesthetics, you know, if you're a residential property owner, you may not right now see the church from your property, but you, you're going to see this one possibly. So, I mean, I...
Is there residential property immediately adjacent? I mean, this, this is in between the church and Harriedriggers. I-95 is on the rear of the property.
It's an empty portion of Country Walk, I think, directly to the south.
Yeah, there's definitely...
Did I miss the height, the overall height of the steeple?
I think it's 110 feet. That's to the top of the cross that's on the top of the steeple, which is on the top of the church. Of course, that's just a spire sticking up in the air. That's not, that's not actually a functional part of the building.
Right, and I did want to point out, the zoning ordinance does give the planning commission the ability to grant permission for steeples higher than the maximum height for that district.
See, I, I thought we were just coming to fix a mistake. And I assumed we were fixing a mistake because we were adding on to this church, but this is, this is, this is a surprise to me.
Well, in my estimation, we are here to fix a mistake, and there's not been a site plan submitted to us at this point. I think this is all conjecture. I don't...
Well, 60 feet's not conjecture, Bill. I mean, that's what they want to make it.
Oh, I understand, but we don't have a site plan in front of us. So, all we're doing is, is trying to fix this mistake. Now, I'm not saying, Richard, that I necessarily agree with this. Chris, I assume this is going to be a two-story building, and basically, what's taking this thing from the 45 feet to the 60 feet is just a greater pitch on the roof?
That's exactly right. It's the, it's the pitch on the roof that's taking it to the height that it is, well, in the, in the dimensions of the building, which, with the pitch on the roof, which is an architectural issue, the building, the larger building puts it higher in the air.
Wait a minute, Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
I am confused now. Originally, you said that it was a single-story building, and I assume that it just had high ceilings. Am I not correct?
I have to...
Are there two floors in this sanctuary?
No, there's only one floor in the sanctuary. The sanctuary building is a single floor, and all of the height that we're talking about is roof structure. Well, plus the steeple, but the, the main structure of the building is roof structure that we're talking about.
I don't know if I'd want to change a light bulb in that sanctuary.
Um, I wouldn't either.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Mr. Amos?
Yes.
What would be the square footage of the proposed new building?
I don't know. It's on the site plan, I don't remember. If you give me one second, I'll look at the site plan and tell you.
Come on, I know it's here somewhere. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that ZM 5287 be deferred till the January 2023 Mainland Planning Commission meeting, so that all these different problems can be worked out between the staff and the church.
Will they have the site plan by then? You'll have the site plan by that meeting as well, including the building elevations and everything else.
So, we have a motion and a second to defer until the January 2023 meeting? Is that correct, Rick?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners, all in favor? That is unanimous, the site plan is deferred. I mean, this...
Defer. You're right. Thanks.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a reminder, the first meeting in January is going to be on January 10th. I don't know if you'd stated that.
Yeah, we did. I didn't this time, but I stated it earlier. Okay. Next on our agenda is ZM 5281. ZM 5281 Glen New Hope Plan Development District Amendment, and Ms. Leaf is here to present for the county.
Okay, this is ZM 5281 Glen New Hope Plan Development District. There have been a couple amendments that have come before you all for the Glen New Hope project off of North 17, near Houghel-Bridefield Plantation. The last amendment that came before you, you may recall, they had transitioned some of the property into a conservation, conservation use, and they had moved some of the uses around on the master plan. This particular amendment that's before you, the owner, Mr. Barber's, has some conversations with a university, and there's some interest in utilizing some of the property for education and research, and so he's interested in applying, interested in amending the plan development text to add some uses specific to university and college research and use, as well as in the master plan to reflect that. So, I, and I will say, as I was coming into the meeting this evening, the agent for the applicant did mention to me that there is a, one change that they are looking to do, and we can discuss this, and you can see if this is something you feel comfortable reviewing tonight, or whether this might need a deferral, because it is a little bit of a change from what they have proposed for, for this. So, in terms of the PD text, the language that they have included would be the university use, and then some specific uses such as office building, classroom building, laboratory, and 7D is the one that is subject to the change they mentioned this evening. So, 7D currently states as proposed, student and employee housing in line with standards set forth in Section 3B. The applicant, instead of the university he's been talking to, is not interested in doing any kind of student or employee housing, so he would like to keep the term "housing," which would mean it'd be housing for anyone, not, not affiliated with university or college. So, in that regard, it really would put this more into the medium residential housing that they have on the rest of the PD text. So, this is a, a change from what they, you know, were proposing prior to tonight. This is the New Hope property, and then this is the master plan. So, these kind of purplish uses right here and right here are the areas that they, that are kind of coming out of this conservation use and would be shown as this university and college use. This part up here, per this change they mentioned tonight, would stay the same. This would be the student, I'm sorry, this would be the, the use with the, with the research and college uses. But this piece right here is what they mentioned they would like to just have as the medium residential zoning, similar to what's down here. So, this would not be shown as university and college use, it would be this medium residential. So, you know, none of this information was available, you know, prior to this evening, so this is for discussion tonight or new, new tonight. These are your possible actions. Jake Hightower is here for the applicant, and Mr. Fred Barber, the owner, is also here. Thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Leaf?
Can you remind us, when we were originally approving this PD text, the, what we approved and what the county commission's feedback was on the number of housing units?
Yes, so, yeah, originally, I think coming out of the Mainland Planning Commission was, I think you all did say 16 units per acre for the density, and then the Board of Commissioners ended up approving 10 units per acre. And the 10 units per acre has stayed with the PD text throughout, even though some things have shifted around, that density has remained.
But that, it was, the 10 units per acre were based on a certain acreage being meet the residential piece, and now we're going to increase it?
Yeah, that is, that is an increase from, yeah, from what was, because this, in terms of the last PD amendment, all of this was going to be conservation, and now, and I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Hightower has the, the acreage for this piece, so I'm not sure exactly what, what the acreage is here, but this would be now also the 10 units per acre. And, yeah, the very first one that came through, this part of the property, was single-family residential. There was just this kind of southern portion was single-family.
But now that's...
Yeah, now that is the medium residential, right?
Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Leaf?
So, we, we do not have a recommendation, however, with the, what was coming before you, this, what was coming before you this evening with the conservation use, really just kind of adding this college/university component, your staff didn't have any concerns with that. I think, you know, now we're looking at increasing housing, that's not something I've really had a chance to really evaluate, because this just came up this evening, so I can't really provide a lot of feedback at this time.
Would it be useful or helpful to the staff to defer this to the meeting, first meeting in January of 2023, to give everybody more time to work out the kinks?
Yeah, that would be definitely one option, and it would also give, you know, if there's any neighbors or interested public, give them an opportunity to review the new proposal, because they would provide, you know, more documentation that would reflect what they're proposing tonight.
I couldn't agree more. Can you imagine trying to make a motion to do this, Richard?
I can.
So, I would, I would say that we should defer this or recommend deferral.
But before we do that, can we hear from the applicant?
Absolutely.
I'm just curious what his... I'm just curious what his thoughts are on the piece. It might be different, and it might be something we can cure tonight.
Good evening. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering here as the authorized agent. And I appreciate the opportunity to let us just explain how we got here and what the change was. So I'll make a quick comment about what happened the last MPC versus now. And I'll let Mr. Barber step in and describe basically what conversations have transpired. The last time we were here, it was basically the exact same as this exhibit. The only difference was that this purple here, which is twenty-five acres, and this purple here, which is eight acres, that was part of conservation and preservation. In between the MPC meeting and the BOC meeting, Mr. Barber was, I had a conversation with the university where they said, "We would like to have a part of this and would like to basically see if there's a way we can have some educational facilities out there." So when we went to the BOC, we provided this exact exhibit. We just said, "Just so you know, we are not asking for this right now. We're going to submit for an amendment so that we can add in this acreage." Right now, what we were looking for was basically the front piece of this property, which was the highway commercial here. And this is medium residential and medium residential at the ten units per acre and medium residential or highway commercial at the front. And in the back, we said, "We're asking for you to approve it as conservation, but just know that the very next day, we're going to submit to do a university use." And so that's, so that's why we were very transparent, because we didn't want to go to the BOC and then come back the very next meeting and say, "Oh, by the way, here's another thing." We wanted to let them know. And then, again, so now Mr. Barber can explain kind of what's transpired with this university use. So in essence, all we're looking at is these two parcels right back here tonight. And we're willing to do whatever y'all think is best to kind of make this clear. But Mr. Barber can, can kind of address these comments.
My name's Fred Barber. Thank y'all for all that you do. So like Jake was saying, the eight acres of residential now is where we have, it was going to be a campus housing as we were walking through what could be done. The university said that they don't want to take on any responsibility as student or staff housing out there. What's in that eight acres right now is where I have moved all the people from the mobile home park. It is still a residential street. And now, I mean, if they don't want to use it, I would like to use that eight acres. You know, I wouldn't use all the density. There's a lot of live oak trees that I'd like to, you know, find that good line of where the conserved area needs to be. But I mean, I would like to put half that, you know, thirty homes out there. Two-part. One, if there is other housing needs from the development, okay, it's not over and beyond too much. But also, there's fifteen people that are still there in mobile homes. One way or another, we're going to place them, like I said, we were going to do from the get-go. That would be, I would say, you know, maybe twenty-five or thirty homes on that street right now, and fifteen of which I could place with the people that are in the mobile homes. That's why, I mean, if y'all want to, you know, talk about this next month, I'd be glad to do that as well. Give us time to kind of...
That wouldn't create any problem for you, Mr. Barber?
One, one other question, Mr. Barber. Where, where right now, are you, is there going to be any kind of a site for educational uses?
That's what, right now, you know, when we were first doing this, I went through and we tagged all the live oak trees. And like I said, we have a marshaling plan that's conserving mitigation plan that's going to go on in the, in back behind this property. So we went through and really protected all the wetlands and where marshaling can approach and really enhance the coastline. But, but, so with that studies and with that part of the project that really hasn't been presented in the development part, is that we have the college out there right now testing and doing studies that are in the Means and Method Plan of the Corps of Engineers by way of coastal resource and the DNR. So Johnny Evans, Dr. Evans, and Dr. Richardson, we have agreed to allow that kind of quantifying information for coastal resources to be done right now, which in turn, we started talking about really using that property. And when they went out there and looked at it, they had a canvas that could take these studies up to where they need to be far as the core and what's expected of our coastline. So I've already had them out there. We have our insurance and our, they're using the old house right now for shelter and bathrooms if they need to. But they've been going out and really putting a lot of test marks out there, not only for the marshaling and rising tide, but we're doing mariculture studies and which varieties work and which genus works. Lot of different good things going on back behind this property. So that eight acres would be minimum density. It would help me place the people that have been taken care of so far during this transformation of this property. And, you know, it, we wouldn't use all eight acres. I mean, I just want to be able to place the people that are there and maybe ten or fifteen. We'll, we'll script that out. So that's it. And then, too, it's not only the school of, what is it, ecology or marine ecology? What do they call it out? Anyway, it's not only in marshaling. When we do develop it, there's other business schools and people on the board of the school that have, we've met that we can grow other parts of the college to internships and things that are going to go on the front part of that development.
All right, Mr. Barber. Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to defer ZM 5281 till the first meeting in January of the Mainland Planning Commission, till January 10th of 2023.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, all in favor? That is unanimous. The motion, this is deferred until January.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item before us is ZM 5173, pause. Fifty-one seventy-one, I'm sorry. You guys don't know this, but I have a hard time seeing. Don't do that again tonight. Paz Wildlife District East Section P2 Plan Development District Amendment. Ms. Leaf is here for the county.
This is ZM 5171, the Paz Wildlife District East. And this property is off of Petersville Road and Highway 99, close to Exit 38. And you may recall, you all did see this project, or version of this project, back in September. The Planning Commission did not take a motion. There were, there are two motions to deny the application, but both failed for lack of four votes. So two motions were made, but there was no action taken. But it did move forward to the, the Planning Commission, or the Board of Commissioners, excuse me. And that was on October 6, 2022. There was some discussion and deliberation at the Board of Commissioners meeting, but what they decided to do was remand this back to the Planning Commission to further discuss. Basically, their direction was to discuss modifications to the uses and restrictions proposed in the application. So we have done another public hearing notice and brought this back before you for another public hearing. The applicant has made a few changes to the application since the last time you saw this. You may recall, the last application you saw was for a PD text to allow billboards, to allow multifamily, allow highway commercial uses, and also allow an RV park. So what they have done is changed, billboards are now prohibited on the site. Multifamily residential is a conditional use. However, I will note that they did not specify density or other restrictions. So the multifamily residential is pretty broad. It's not really narrowed down to what we would refer to as a medium residential or general residential. They are also showing that access on Highway 99 would be the primary access, and the only access on Petersville would be emergency only. So there were some concerns from Petersville residents about access. It would be emergency only on Petersville. They would also include highway commercial uses and an RV park with a maximum of five hundred spaces. And they are maintaining a fifty-foot buffer adjacent to residential properties, and that's a carryover from the existing PD. And there was some discussion back in September and again at the BOC meeting. There's some unique language in this plan development text relevant to this property that basically if a wildlife preserve, a wildlife park, is not created on the parcel, there's really very few uses that are, that are allowed here. Basically, it was a PD created for a wildlife park, and there is some language that says any other uses, the PD would have to be amended. So there was some discussion back in September, and we have verified since then that they definitely need to amend the PD to do anything on the site if it's not a wildlife park. So that is what's before you this evening. And just to refresh you on where the property is located. And this is their, their master plan showing the property. And then this is just the existing, or showing the proposed uses that I just summarized. And this evening, Mr. William Ligon is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions, Ms. Leaf?
Madam Chair, I'd like to just make a point at this time. I'll be recusing myself from this item in, as far as the discussion and the vote.
Mr. Ligon, would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to add that there's one more restriction that was included that wasn't mentioned, and that there's a prohibition against any type of food processing or cold food storage facility on the site. And that seemed to be important to some of the Commissioners, and that was, that's definitely in there. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. I could come up later on the approval section. But we would ask your approval of the, of the proposed change.
Mr. Ligon, I don't have a lot of problem with this. There is one little thing that gives me a little bit of heartburn, and that was where Ms. Leaf mentioned that one of the bullet points in the revision of the PD text was multifamily residential as a conditional use. And further in the report, it states that the comprehensive plan's future land use map was updated in 2018 indicates this is designated as low-density residential or single-family.
Sure, we can put that limitation in there or take that out if it pleases the Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ligon. This is a public hearing, and so if there are, if there's anyone in the chamber who would like to come forward and speak in opposition, please come to the podium and state your name and address your, your questions to the, to the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Stu Graham. I'm a resident of Heritage Estates residential neighborhood directly across Highway 99 from this proposal. This is the third time we've been here over approximately the last three years. Our neighborhood and area is unique in Glen County, remote from busy commercial areas, and that's part of the reason we moved here and part of the reason we live there. This is residential property, low-density single-family, and zoned as such. Do we want the area to develop? Yes, but a single-family residential, not commercial. There was special approvals previously for the wildlife park, which I think has already been approved. I remind you that zoning allows certain uses and specific uses, not only for commercial and development, but to protect existing residences and neighborhoods. Please take into consideration our neighborhood asks that rezoning to commercial not be approved. I would ask Smith &amp; Sons what their vision of the property is in ten years. Personally, I would not like to see a Dollar General across from our property, and the designation as commercial would probably allow that. As Joni Mitchell said so long ago, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." Don't let us look back with regrets that our small portion of paradise in Glen County has been forever lost. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to come and speak in opposition? Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you very much. I'm Debbie Graham. I'm a retired business consultant. And when I look at the, the plan for three to five hundred RV spaces, I'm thinking there's no marketing plan here. There are lots of other RV places up and down I-95. There's nothing to make this particular piece of property wonderful for people to bring their RVs in. So I'm a little bit worried about how they're going to pay their debt service with RVs not, let's see how I would say this, with RVs not ganging up. I just don't think that there's enough, and there aren't enough RVs coming up and down the road to make this nut work. Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Alice Kais. I'm with 100 Miles. Sorry for the confusion before. I wanted to come and speak to you and ask that you deny the plan development, the change, the change in the PD to the, for the RV park. As has been mentioned to you before at previous meetings, the community members are quite concerned about the traffic increase. As Ms., as Ms. Leaf mentioned before, also, there's the change in the, in the, is a change from the PD language would add two hundred more RVs that's currently allowed in the current plan development that's for a wildlife district. And as Mr. Ed, you mentioned also, the comprehensive plan identifies this as low-density residential as well as coastal marshalins. So the property itself is really not suited for RV development. You have to factor in also that the travel center that's proposed next door is estimated to bring in two hun, I'm sorry, twenty thousand more cars a day onto Exit 42. That adds to the increase, that increases the concern that residents have for the number of RVs that would be coming in and out, as well as the number of cars visiting that area. The area is also considered significant for the Gullah Gichi heritage of Glen County. Descendants of the enslaved people that worked on Hoffel-Brodfield and areas have, surrounding areas have identified sacred lands near this site. How will this development preserve that heritage for those descendants? Thirdly, I want to, I want to acknowledge that the amended PD text describes that Smith &amp; Son anticipate working with the Joint Water and Sewer Commission to provide water to water and sewer that currently do not extend to this area. The packet that you, that you received says that there's no certainty that the Water and Sewer Commission will extend water to this area, but there is certainty that the proposal will be costly to provide services for. Studies show that local governments that choose to allow building in undeveloped land spend two and a half times more for infrastructure and services than compared with those existing, those with existing developments. And lastly, the applicant's property includes many acres of sensitive wetlands that have yet to be surveyed. If this is approved, the anticipation of five hundred RV lots will increase impervious surfaces and onsite alterations that will not only require permitting from the federal government, but will undoubtedly impede the water quality of the sensitive wildlife area as well as being an area that's significant to the Altamaha River corridor. So in consideration of the approval before you today, we recommend that you deny the request from the applicant. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Cheryl Cunningham. I live in Heritage Estates since 1990. I have spent quite a bit of time in researching. I've gone to the DOT site and looked at the progress from the widening of 99 in this area. I've also looked at the BATS report to see if there's any widening that's taking place. I checked back through the plan development text, talked with or emailed with planning and zoning. This land has never been approved... This land has never been approved for an RV park. The RV park that was part of Paws was placed in P1 in the northern sector, and I have a map of that. So I will speak to several things, and I'll try to keep it on topic and not go through it. I brought my extra notes because I wasn't sure how many of us could be here. I'm in charge of the emails for our group. And the normal people who speak instead of me are not here tonight and could not come because of illness or being out of town. I'm requesting that the Mainland Planning Commission deny ZM 5171. Rzoning PT 2, and I'll call it that rather than its full name, as commercial would be an encroachment on the existing family, single-family residential neighborhoods east of the Brunswick-Altamaha River. And you have a map that you're looking at that shows the residence. I have a copy of the new planning that will be coming up in front of you for the land that is west of the canal. And they're asking the commercial, but they're also asking residential. But the land near us is wetland. I have a map in my products that show that, that comes from their plan. The area that is west of Morning Star is also residential nearest to Morning Star. And that apparently has been approved. I wasn't able to find that particular one. A two-lane State Road 99 does not support the proposed land use. There are no storage lanes. The widening of 99 is not an active project. In fact, Glen County and the BATS have put it off. Since 1999, the realignment of Petersville Road was taking place. 20 years later, it's still not done. State Road 99 is one of the four designated hurricane evacuation routes in Glen County. Add to that 500 RVs trying to pull out. Development will further impact the emergency evacuation along with the development that's planned to be taking place. The land use RV park and multifamily residential will have an impact on the environment of this area of wetlands, the Brunswick-Altamaha Canal. There's nothing in the plan that I found that would show a protection for the canal. Will people be able to go up and down it? I mean, how will it be used? How will it be protected? Now granted, it's on the next line, next land up, but they still have the RVs right up against the canal. The infrastructure, roads, water and sewer infrastructure, the drainage of stormwater, the density of the population of the land are all concerns. In 1994, in GC 894, this tract of land was R5. And on the maps that are produced in the packet, and the AKAs as a name is R5, excuse me, not R4, R5. And it was to be residential. When Paws came into it, Paws was divided into two parts. And there was a transportation system to take it from Paws East to Paws West. And the park, the safari, the RV, all of that was in Paws West. We sat in the meetings with them. We had many compromises. And of our choices, we chose parking as the least of the evils that we, none of us wanted to hear animals and one of the odors that went with them and so forth. So we agreed that we would let, we would give our approval with some concerns.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, I'm speaking for the group now.
Your time is up.
Okay. I would like, may I finish the comments that I have? Because one of the things it does says is if you're speaking for the group, you can speak longer. And I'm speaking for the group.
Aaron?
You can allow it?
If you look, and I'm not sure if I can get back to the right packet or go the right And it's not there. If you were, looked at the packet for the planning development, it gives PDG commercial. This land, and I've had emails from planning and zoning, that this land is not PDG commercial, it is PDG. It is not freeway commercial zoned. That is also in an email from planning and zoning, which I have documentation of. The correct zoning is Golden Isles Gateway Paws Plan Development General. And that's from GC 3499. The question is asked on that same page, is this in harmony? They chose to answer as if it was part of the, of something that never existed. They did not answer the question, is it in harmony with the community? And the answer's no. The community is single-family residential. There's a section of wetland. There's a tiny little section of commercial. But the majority of it is residential surrounding this piece of property. Would it be detrimental to the property and persons? We've already had a person put their house on sale because of the zoning issue. They're tired of the fight. We are just now beginning to where our communities, our prices are going up on our property, as is true of Petersville Road. Because most of us have lived there for 30 years or more. And so now the property prices are beginning to climb, and the new houses are $30,000 and up. An RV park with its activities is not conducive to a single-family neighborhood. Secondly, there are several sections in the plan where they did not correct that Petersville Road would only be for emergency access. And that would be a conflict that may come back to create an issue. That needs to be gone through and corrected so that every place that says Petersville Road, it should say emergency use only. The staff report, I'll cover that so I won't go back there. In 1984, it was labeled residential. And through our many meetings, through the many developments that have come before us, our community has fought to keep this area in the character it was designed for, which is residential. Even in the final Page 11, we hear about Page 12 all the time, but Page 11 said two uses, parking and the Paws buildings. And that was put in because of December, I think it was the 7th of 1999, when we asked for something in concrete. And they did. And they came back and put that in the plan. Now, I have a complete notebook of just going through the plan step by step. I won't even attempt that. But we ask that you deny the zoning because it does, it's not in harmony with our community and is detrimental to our community.
Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak on behalf of this
Good evening, Jay Kite. I'm with Robert Civil Engineering. I'm here to speak on behalf of the project. I have written down notes, but I can address each comment if you'd like for us to speak after. I'm not the authorized agent, but we have assisted with this project, as you can see, with the zoning exhibit, as well as, we've been working on a lot of the projects that were discussed tonight. But in terms of keeping it just in favor of this project, this parcel is, while we understand that there is residential to the south, what's happened since the new development of Buc-Ee's has come in, it has brought a lot of growth to that area, and it's growth that we're going to see over the next five to 10 years. And basically, in our opinion, the Smiths have been able to see the opportunity of basically transforming Exit 42 into a really good use for the traveling public to Buc-Ee's as well as for the planned districts on the other sides of I-95, as well as basically east and west. As you can see here, this is the canal right here. This is the new Buc-Ee's. And I do know that there are future projects in place for both commercial along Highway 99 as well as RV projects along this corridor as well. These kinds of RV parks are not what you think of in terms of seeing a unkept facility. These are recreational facilities with nice, large clubhouses, pretty pools. It's one for families to come and enjoy. There's a lot of green space that's involved. I can speak to the wetlands, and I'm only going to speak just in favor of the project itself. I think that to take this piece of property and to convert it into an RV use from what was going to be a parking lot, I think is basically right in line with kind of what that area is kind of moving towards. And I think it'd be a really good project and one Glen County would be proud of for folks to come visit as well and enjoy the Golden Isles. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Just, just a couple of points. I mean, the property is within the I-95 corridor on Highway 99, which connects three other state highways, Highway 17, Highway 341, Highway 82. And it's going to experience a tremendous amount of growth. I mean, this parcel at one time was scheduled to be paved. It was going to be a parking lot, and you could have 5,000 cars coming in and out. And with 500 RV spots, that's just 10% of the vehicular traffic that would have been on this, on this property. Now, with, with the density of 15 spaces per acre, you may be talking 32 or 33 acres. The rest of it's going to be, you know, natural walking trails, a use of the land to make it an attractive place to come for people to be. There's going to be a lot of investment in this. It's going to be a high-end RV park. And certainly, it would be something that we would be proud of. And, you know, Buc-Ee's is right next to it. And really, if you think about it, an RV park where, is a good transition between, you know, a commercial area and a residential area because, I mean, people are going to be there, they want to have it quiet and enjoy it and not have, you know, a lot of loud activity because people are sleeping there at night. So, I mean, with the plans that are, that are being made for this and the open spaces and the green spaces and the lakes, I think it's something that's going to be attractive and it's not going to be a detriment, certainly to the area. And it will, it will be consistent with the growth and it's not really going to be that disruptive. So we would, again, ask you to approve this.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. The public hearing period is closed. Commissioners?
All right. Ms. Leaf, I'd like for you to come up, please. I'm going to need your assistance on this. The applicant agreed to some conditions. Could you put that back on the screen, please?
So these, yeah, this is a summary of the uses that Mr. Ligon had added that's not on the list, that there was a prohibition on, on the food processing. And all of that is in the planned development text. So there isn't any additional conditions. The only thing that, that was mentioned tonight by Mr. Ligon, the question about the multifamily, it sounded like multifamily could come out of the PD text altogether, if I understood, if that's what the, if that's what the Commission would like to do as a recommendation. So, so multifamily would not be in a, would not be a conditional use, which is how it's I think that was the only one, that was the only one that I heard.
Okay.
That would be a change from what the PD text says that's in front of you tonight.
One question I have for the applicant. Why would they agree to prohibit billboards? I, I, I personally don't understand that, but it is, it is, it is what it is. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Missy, if you need to.
No, no, you go. I thought you were done.
All right. Commissioner Edgy, are you okay? Are you satisfied if we take the multifamily residential?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. With these conditions applied, I'd like to make a motion.
I have a question.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I think one of the folks that spoke, spoke to the wetlands not being determined yet, but there was a map up that showed wetlands. Can we get clarity if there has been determination of the wetlands?
Good evening, Jay Kite. I'm with Robert Civil Engineering. To answer your question, is there, there is a JD on hand from the Army Corps of Engineers. We actually have secured a land disturbance permit on this property quite a few years ago. Those JDs are good for five years. So those wetlands there, those are actually flagged and been picked up by a surveying company. So those are, those are accurate. And so some of them are isolated, some are connected to the canal, but those are true wetlands right there. And so there's ways to work around them, incorporate them as part of basically kind of giving that, that natural feel, but those are true delineated wetlands.
And, and just so, my understanding of the current PD text, Ms. Leaf, because there is no wildlife park, and I just want to clarify for folks that may not have lived here at the time, it wasn't a wildlife preserve. It was lions, tigers, bears, all of that. It wasn't saying, "We love these raccoons, we're going to give them 10,000 acres." It was a Disneyland of animals. So it wasn't, yeah. So I think there might be some confusion by some folks in the room what it was. But, now I forgot what I was going to say. Oh, so the current PD text, the way it's written, they really can't do anything with this property if there's not an amendment to this PD text because there is no animal park.
That is correct.
Yes.
We have to do something for this property to be usable. Sounds like some folks in the room would like it to be nothing, some people want it to be single-family, and some folks want it to be this RV park. And it's our job to figure out what's fair and equitable and the right fit for our community, right?
Correct.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Is it my turn? Let me get my phone back up. All right. With those conditions applied, Ms. Leaf, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZM 5171 as presented.
So if I can just, as present, well, as modified.
As, right.
As modified with the removal of the multifamily residential.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, everything is in the planned development text. So what you're doing is just removing the multifamily residential from the planned development text.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, as modified. Perfect.
Okay. Did I do that correctly? Is, did I do it correctly?
Yes. Yeah, if everyone understands that motion, yes.
As modified, that covers it.
Okay.
Second. We have a motion in second. Commissioners, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay. Next up for us is ZM, I've got to put this out here so I can make sure I see it, ZM 5232 Billboard Use Parcel 033-26645. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So this is consideration of a change of zoning from R21 family residential to freeway commercial for the installation of a billboard. So this particular parcel is approximately one acre. It's located on Blythe Island. It is adjacent to I-95. Currently, the property is only accessed via a private access easement, and the access easement is owned by Ms. Smith, who's the applicant. easement is owned by Ms. Smith, who's the applicant. And I will note, Ms. Smith's intention is to put a billboard on the property, but the rezone would be to FC, so there would be, you know, other freeway commercial uses that could potentially be allowed unless there is a limitation placed on the rezone to only allow a billboard or only allow certain uses, which the commissions, you know, and the board has done in the past with some other rezones. So, here is the property that's in question. So, this is I-95. This is Brentwood Circle in the Cameron Place neighborhood. So, the access to this property is, this is the private access easement that comes off of Brentwood Circle. And these properties along here are, were actually originally part of the lots that are on the other side of I-95 that are accessed off of Blythe Island Drive. So, when I-95 came through, these lots were split, so these are kind of remaining, really landlocked parcels with the exception of Ms. Smith's access easement. So, there's two that are in this area. The second one is also in this area, but we'll just look at this one for now. So, this is what the property, it's a survey of the property. And Ms. Smith has stated that the billboard would be approximately in this location right here, so if there was more of a preference to rezone just a portion of the lot, that's really the only intent she has, is to have a billboard along I-95 here. And she has submitted a few other images. So, again, here is the parcel right here. These blue demarcations are where the surrounding homes are, so these would be the homes that, just to kind of show the distance between the homes and where this location would be. And here's some examples of what she is thinking of. She has stated that she does not want a lit billboard. She would like something that's lower profile. Again, that would be something that would need to be limited in conditions because under the FC zoning, you know, billboard would be able to meet all the required, would be able to be done under all the regulations in our code, which does include being lit and being, you know, taller billboard. So, but here's some examples of what she has in mind for the space. And these are your possible actions, and Ms. Smith is here for the application this evening.
Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Leaf?
Yes. Ms. Leaf?
Yes, sir.
These signs will be facing the traffic going south into Florida, basically? They won't be at an angle or anything like that?
They, I mean, there's no prohibition on the angle. I mean, they could potentially be. I think, and I know she had mentioned that because of the curvature of the interstate, having one at an angle or having double-sided may not work, but right now, there wouldn't be any prohibition on it, so someone could do, yeah, double-sided.
And one last question. The lights will, if there's any lights at all, I couldn't remember if you said the word, they will be fade on the sign and not pointing toward Hillary Trace, which is actually the residence on the other side of 95?
Okay.
So, they will be, very little impact on them, correct? I mean, that's a good little ways.
And that's, and that's not something, I mean, right now, our code, it's not something that would be prohibited. I mean, she's saying that she doesn't want any lights at all, so that could be a condition placed on the rezone.
So, no lights at all, okay.
That if billboards are allowed, that they would not be lit, and that would be something that we'd make sure would happen as someone applies.
And one last question.
That was your last one, a minute.
I can't count. This is the last one. These signs will be 35 feet from the ground, because I travel that area. 95 is elevated at about 15 to 20 feet, so these will be not 35 feet above 95. They will be 35 feet from the ground beside 95, correct?
I think it's 35 feet from 95.
Is it max height for, whatever the zoning district is?
From grade or is it from I-95? Okay, it is from grade. Yes, sir. So, 35 from grade.
That is my last one. Okay. All right. Now, I've got a question, Ms. Leaf. On your map, the red line, who owns that private easement?
That is Ms. Smith. The applicant for this rezone owns this access easement. That's in red.
Okay. And that is the only way to get to this property?
That is correct. Yes, that is the only access.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Just to clarify, the 0327881, 0314753, those are all landlocked. They have no access to the, those property owners have no access.
That is correct. They do not have any legal access, to my knowledge.
And if the whole parcel, the one point, whatever acres it was, is rezoned as freeway, how, commercial, doesn't that limit her ability to use the property for certain other uses such as residential or?
Right.
Yeah, I'm just curious whether you really want to do the whole piece.
Yeah, and that was, yeah, a question she posed to me, too, was whether it could just be a portion so that it's not the entirety of the one acre. I mean, the other parcel that's right down here, which is the next application, that's a smaller piece, but, yeah, she asked that, too. We've just, I mean, if we did just a portion, we would still need some kind of legal description so that it's very clear on our zoning maps, you know, where one zone starts and where the other zone ends.
And do you know where the next closest billboard is?
It is, I'm trying to think. Something along this stretch.
It's 2429. Each exit is three miles exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's 29.
Where the new RV park is headed towards 29, and on the opposite side, they're all the way to 29, they are there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so exit 29, and then, yeah, and then up at exit 38. I'm trying to think of anything in between.
Not any close.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And then it, I think it was mentioned maybe in our packet, I don't remember, that the next closest property owner is, doesn't object to the project? No? Did I make that up? Sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Smith did mention that the property owner, I think it's this, I think it's this property, has stated to her that she's, that that person's not an objection, but that we don't have a letter or a statement.
We don't have that in writing.
Yeah, from that individual.
Not to say they didn't say it, I'm just saying we don't have.
Yeah, it's not something we have, yeah.
And is the, which piece, Ms. Smith, is where you've done your horse piece?
A couple of, it's 17 acres there to the.
Right. Okay. Oops. Sorry.
Yeah, it's this, yeah, so this property was rezoned to FA with some restrictions a couple of years ago.
The whole upper part is buffer, wooded buffer that will remain all the way across.
Up there. Yeah.
You own that piece of property, too, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a separate one.
The 0306726, do you know right offhand who owns that piece of property?
672.
The, up, uh, right here and there.
That's Baker Warren.
All right. I know personally that he does not.
I spoke to him Friday.
Okay.
I know that personally.
And then who's the next one down?
He and Baker and I will be dividing that property and leaving the lookers.
Okay.
Mr. Downey and Mr. Rick's on it right now.
Do you want to step on up just so we can hear through the?
This is recording it, thank you.
I'm Miranda, thank you. The property in between that you're asking, that is a five-acre tract that is owned by the Downey and Furman-Rick's family. I think Mr. Downey passed away. I've spoken to Al Downey twice. His intention is to sell it, and Baker and I have discussed both dividing it and just absorbing the property line into, so we would both have three acres. He actually lives in the top cul-de-sac right off. He lives at like 03484, so he has about nine acres there, I guess, now. And because it's landlocked, Mr. Downey, to clean up loose ends of his father's passing, has, you know, proposed on the table for us to try to come to an agreement where it would be ours, but we would both intend to keep it wooded. And so, any of the three blue spot dots, those are homes. You can't see, those homes have no visibility to this area at all already because of the 06738. All of that was the conditional buffering, three-acre buffering that I, that was part of my farm agricultural. That whole 17-acre tract to the left, that is the farm agricultural, except for the top is R-20. So, these lots did not have anything to do with that, and they have been, it's not really an easement, it is that I own that parcel that looks like the long stretch line. I own that parcel, so I don't need an easement to cross it.
So, Ms. Smith has come to speak on her behalf. Mr. Ligon, did you want to come and speak as well before we get into the, to the public comment portion?
Yes. She'd asked, actually asked me to help her, and I think there are a couple of things that we needed to point out. One is that on the applications, the, as far as the lighting, it actually says that it's not, it's going to be non-digital. And so, that doesn't necessarily mean lighting. We may need to discuss that. I know she doesn't intend to have bright lights on it, and I think you said you would, no flashing lights? Are you going to have lights, low lights?
I mean, I guess the small spotlights that are shown like on one, but anything that I don't know, I don't see.
Yeah.
So, the answer to the question is it will be lit?
It, it's, there's a lit, but it's not, it's not digital lighting. It's not going to be flashing lighting. It's not going to be anything that's going to be bright way up in the air. It's going to be the low-level type sign that you see there. That's right. Just illuminate the sign, that's it. And, you know, the, what she's asking, it would not be higher than 25 feet from the interstate because the interstate is built up above the grade of the property there, and so, at that level, it would be about that height right, right there.
At the bottom of the sign.
For the, that's right, at the bottom of, at the bottom of the sign. And really, is, let's see, if we can go back to the, to the map, right, yeah, there. When she, when she filled out her application, I know that there's been some discussion about should we just limit this to the end of the lot where the interstate is, and looking at the one where, let me find my mouse. Well, the one that we're considering now, the rectangular piece, she did not understand that she could do that, and that's why the application is for the entire piece. But if necessary, if it would feel, if the commission would feel more comfortable, that can be adjusted and can be amended. She could have a piece surveyed out, but she didn't think that she was permitted to do that. I think with the one that you're going to consider next, the triangular piece at the bottom, that's so small, I don't know that it's worthwhile delaying that and having a piece surveyed on that because the property's so small, you can't do anything with it anyway, except for put a billboard on it.
So, Mrs. Leaf, or Ms. Leaf, so do we have the ability, I don't know if we've ever done this, if we said, if we do say we want to approve the freeway commercial zoning, that the only use for that zoning would be to place one billboard, and that the rest of the property could only have uses consistent with R-20 zoning? Can we do that?
You could. We've, the commission and the board has done it a couple of times with forest agricultural zoning, where it might be limited to, actually, I mean, her adjacent property was that, it was limited to, I think, just horses. I don't think she was allowed any other agricultural uses. So, we've done that a couple of times with FA that comes to mind. So, it could be done, that you could limit it to a very specific use. I feel more comfortable having, having a legal description surveyed out of, so you just, it's really just for GIS mapping purposes, so we know exactly where the FC is versus the, but I think that could be, I think that could be done.
I don't, yeah, and I don't think that Ms. Smith's intention is to do anything but what she just said with the property. Things change, and somebody down the road, you know, could be, well, you know, can I put junk cars, you know, can I do, you know, whatever they, all the different uses, so.
Right.
But I don't, you know, it seems like if we say can only be used for a billboard, then can she use it for all the other uses that would be in R-20? I don't, you know, just seem, have some clarity on that.
Yeah.
Well, I know when we, when we first, what we read indicated exactly what we're talking about, even though it's a big piece of property, it was only, the only use would be for the billboard. That was my understanding of what was presented to us.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's been stated that Ms. Smith didn't know that she could survey out a portion of it. The big question here is, would Ms. Smith only like maybe 2,000 square feet or four, whatever it is? And then the rest of it be forced agriculture? That's the question that needs to be asked at this point, and her or her representatives will have to tell us that.
Well, it's R-20 now, so I don't know that we could change it to forest agriculture without advertising that. He should, yeah, yeah. It's have to just stay R-20, I think, for now.
And here's a suggestion. I mean, if you want it surveyed, she could have it surveyed, but you could just say the, that's the eastern 20 or 30 feet of that lot, and it would just take off that area right this, of the lot that's right next to the interstate and allow her to place the billboard within that little area. You couldn't do anything else with it. If you need a 50 by 50, or you could say the eastern 50 feet of the lot, and that would, she wanted to have some landscaping and a berm in there as well, and that would permit her to do that. And then.
But make that area big enough now.
Yeah.
Don't, don't cut it short. 50 by 50 is not very big, Mr. Ligon.
What I was saying is the eastern 50 feet. Now, it would get, if from the, from the edge of the property line along the interstate, you would move back 50 feet along the entire lot.
That's still not very much property, Mr. Ligon.
You use 50 or 75 feet?
An average billboard is 85 by 32, so you, you know, so technically, I think that the notice where.
That, that, here's, here's, there's some other squares along the interstate that are 50 by 50, but she understood that those, doing something like that was not permitted under the zoning ordinance, and I have not looked at that, and that's why she didn't do it that way. But if, but if you did the eastern, if those are 50 by 50 and they permit a sign, you could do the eastern 50 or, to be safe, the eastern 60 feet of that parcel, and it would give, should give her plenty of room to do that.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
I have one more question, not necess, not, not of you, Mr. Ligon. Either Mr. Mumford or Ms. Leaf. We, if I understand correctly, we put this out and advertised it the way it was presented to us. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, we have it advertised as a one-acre rezone to freeway commercial, but I think lessening that rezone to, I mean, if it's a smaller land mass that you're resoning to for, or, I'm sorry, freeway commercial, I think that would be acceptable within the zoning unless Mr. Mumford thinks differently. It's, it'd be different if they wanted to add land to it, then that would not, but if they're going to be, if you're reducing the scope of what they're upzoning to FC. Yeah, just to kind of add, I mean, we, basically, the reason we do the rezones, the way we do them is we need to have some legal description, so, and, you know, ensuring that there's a parcel that has those boundaries. There was a practice a long time ago where you would just rezone a very small portion for a use, and the rest of it is left another use. It just ends up being confusing down the road. A lot of times, people don't realize they're buying split zone property, so as long as there's a clear legal description of what is zoned, then that's, that meets the ordinance.
But are we in a position to create this, that sitting here tonight?
Yes, it sounds like there may need to be further discussion on exactly how much land they would like to rezone to FC unless they're prepared for that for sure tonight.
Stephanie, can you flip back to my survey? It's up there, because I could just tell you now, I don't want to hold it up, but so, can you see how many feet that is right there, like the width? It's like about 100 foot wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's showing 99.42 feet on the eastern end. Yeah, it's showing 99.42 feet on the eastern end.
Right. So if we just came back, you know, 100 by 100, I mean, I'm okay with that. That that's the only portion that's adjacent to the interstate that would fall into that, and the rest would remain the R-20.
So correct, is the segment right here is 54.3638? But this is 54.12?
I do own that small triangle as well. It just hasn't been...
All right, Mr. Ligon. You satisfied with 100 by 100 on the east portion?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, but here's...
I can just say, when you're dealing with legal descriptions, a lot of time, especially in the city of Brunswick, they used to say the eastern 50 or the eastern 100 feet of a lot. And you could just say the eastern 100 feet of that... Of the parcel of land that you're dealing with would be rezoned to that. And that should give her plenty of room to be able to operate and put her billboard.
Thank you.
So I have one more question. If they did that, does that create a separate parcel, and then therefore the part we're leaving is too small to develop with a well and subdike tank? She won't ever develop it, or... No, okay. I got you, okay.
Yeah, it would be problematic to, I mean, to subdivide it, but if it's purely legal description for the zoning and not creating a separate lot...
I think the commission can approve it. I think Mr. Ligon and I will have to go back and figure out how to work the mechanics out with GIS, create a perhaps a separate parcel on that so it's identified as that and it's separate. But I think whatever we've worked out, we can work out in the time between now and the time it reaches the board of commissioners. But I think all y'all are doing right now is just simply making a recommendation that that occur, and we'll pursue that the best we can.
Okay, guys, we still have a public comment period that we have to go through. And one more presentation. So do we have anyone in the chamber who would like to come forward and speak in opposition of ZM 5232? If so, come to the podium and state your name. We have some other conversations going on in the chamber. I would ask that they stop. Thank you. Do we have anyone in the chamber who would like to come and speak in favor of this project? Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment is... Period is closed. Commissioners?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZM 5232, and I don't know. Erin and Mr. Ligon is going to have to sort that out. I don't know how to word that.
I got you.
Please, Commissioner, you help me.
All right, you're good. So we're going to say that the... It's going to be approved for the freeway commercial zoning for 100 feet of depth of the property from the east... The most western point of the eastern property lot. Because it's not... Sure? Even though the two corners aren't equal? It would move just like it? Yeah, okay. For the... So the motion would be...
Parallel to...
Parallel to the eastern boundary line.
Okay.
What he said. No, no. So the motion would be that we would approve freeway commercial zoning for the sole purpose of installing a billboard as the only use for the eastern 100 feet of the parcel.
So that's the motion.
Is that my motion now, or is it...
It doesn't matter, as long as it gets done.
Okay, it's my motion.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. Okay, so we have now ZM 5233 billboard use, parcel 03-27363. Ms. Leaf?
All right, so this is the second parcel. It's also on Black Island, owned by Ms. Smith. So this is similar. And this one is actually... This one shows a split zone of R-20 and one family residential, but it's only a .34-acre property. It's this tiny piece right here. And here's a survey of the property. So again, it does have the same access easement coming off of Brentwood Circle, adjacent to interstate highway... Or highway, I'm sorry, I-95. So this would be approximately where they would place the billboard. And these are your possible actions. And Ms. Smith and Mr. Ligon are going to hear for this application as well.
Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Leaf?
Ms. Leaf, can we walk through the properties that are to the south of it?
Let's see. If I can pull up that same map.
Yeah.
To the south.
So that is... That is West Shore Circle, correct? That it... That where that lake is?
Right here.
Yeah, that's at the end of West Shore Circle, correct? I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Leaf, do you have an answer to that question?
The property, so you've got a little triangle. You got... Looks like a power easement or something that runs...
It's woods.
Yeah. So... But keep going down, Ms. Leaf.
Yeah, as far as I go.
Oh, to your left, right there. That property. That's owned by individuals, correct? It's the back of properties on West Shore Drive, I guess, maybe?
Yeah, West Shore Court.
Commissioner, you... Those... That particular property closest to 95, that is the back end of a West Shore Drive property.
Right.
All right. West Shore Circle is in yellow. See where it goes up, makes a little cul-de-sac? But those are all properties that are north of West Shore Drive.
Yeah, so I just... Yeah, my question is, were those property owners sent notices?
So it would have been 200 feet from the property. So these... These two lots most likely would have. I'd have to pull up the documentation. It's on our system at the office to verify it, but it'd be 200 feet from the edge. So I think these folks would have been included.
Is there... I'm just... I mean, they're not going to have seen a sign, right? I don't even know where y'all put a sign.
Yeah, the sign I put on Brentwood Circle with an arrow kind of pointing down, because that was the most visible to be able to... You know, because this is the access to it.
That's the... I mean, that's probably what causes me grief on this one, is, you know, those folks are hanging out in their house, and there's... They think that's, you know, residential zoning, and all of a sudden, there's a billboard that they may could see from their property.
Commissioner, you... We could put in a stipulation that that billboard could be on the north end of that property. It's a small... I think it's a three-tenths acre piece of property. We could put a stipulation that that billboard could be on the north end, and it could be landscaped, so it could not be seen from the south. If that's an issue for you.
No, I'm just trying, you know... Not necessarily an issue for me. I just would... I mean, it's a long way. I mean... Is that a utility right of way, or is that like a road that was never built?
All the way down the interstate, too. But it comes down, and then it runs all the way down the interstate out to the marsh.
Okay. And it's all treed? Okay, thank you.
So would the applicant... Commissioners, do you have any other questions? Would the... Would Mr. Ligon come forward and ask us to consider this?
Yes, ma'am. I would ask the board to please approve this, consider approving.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in opposition to this? Please come forward and state your name. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak in favor of this? Please come forward and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none. We're missing a commissioner for a minute. But the public comment period is closed.
When we get the commissioner back, I'll make a motion to approve ZM 5233 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're going to wait till Ms. New returns so that we can vote. It'll just be a minute.
I am, too. I'm ready to go home and take a nap.
We're winding up here.
To approve.
All in favor? Any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you all.